Good evening. I'll call the meeting to order of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees for July 15, 2021. I'm Greg Musial, Chairman of the Board. We have four trustees present in the room. Trustee Lawson and trustee Cross are participating by Zoom. Trustee Cook is out of town and will not be able to join us this evening. If you'll help me by starting our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, I appreciate it.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have a quorum of trustees, so the next item on the agenda is awards and recognition. Turn it over to Dr. Bound.
Actually, we don't have any awards and recognition this evening, other than we have a student to recognize tonight. Although, before I do that, I was just informed today through Phi Theta Kappa that another one of our exemplary students has received an award. So Caitlin Tsai was just awarded the 2021 Coca-Cola Leaders of Promise Scholarship, and so she's a student from Olathe. She's an ambassador within our honors program, and she is a second-year student pursuing associate of general science with plans to study molecular bioscience and eventually go to med school. So anyways, I wanted to take this moment to recognize Caitlin for her recognition nationally. So, and now it's my privilege to introduce to you Solomon Webb. And Solomon is our student speaker this time. He is the incoming president of the Black Student Union. Solomon had the opportunity in June, part of our celebration of Juneteenth, to introduce Professor Shabazz and helped facilitate that evening and just did a fantastic job. He is a living story of grit and perseverance. And I have to tell you, when I spent time talking to him a little while ago, it was just pure joy for me. And so I'll leave my introduction there and invite Solomon if you'd come to the podium and tell us about you.
Welcome, Solomon.
Good evening, trustees. Thank you all for having me here. First, giving honor to God, who is the head of my life, to my family, to President Bound, to the trustees, and to other officers represented this evening. Good evening. My name is Solomon Webb. I'm a current sophomore here at Johnson County Community College, pursuing a degree in liberal arts, hoping to advance my major degree into sports management, both bachelor's and master's. As stated earlier, I'm also the newly-elected Black Student Union president and Student Life Ambassador as well, too. I'm a graduate from Olathe South High School, class of 2020. And when I first came to Johnson County, just to give a brief synopsis of my life, unfortunately, with last year, my mom passed away. And on top of that, both of my parents are deceased. And so that kind of really changed my life in a way, but it really taught me to keep going in spite of what I was going through as a freshman in college. As a sophomore now, I consider it a blessing to communicate more with other leaders and to strive to align on my vision as a Black Student Union president this year, boosting diversity numbers across for all nationalities and genders, to make Black Student Union a safe place for anyone of different religions, different political beliefs, to share their viewpoints, so as we can continue to become more educated and respectfully agree and/or disagree on each other's opinions, and to make sure all of our voices are heard and known. Especially with all that we are going through, we need to continue to be more humble, be patient, and realize that we can get through this together with unity, hope, and faith in God. Other than that, that is a brief synopsis of why I have, although a quick backstory in my life, I was involved in sports management in high school for all four years, with football, basketball, and baseball. I was the president as well as my senior year of high school, as long as being a member of Black Student Union in my high school as well, too. And tonight is a humble honor to not only represent my high school, but all that I'm involved in and all that has led me to become the young man who I am today. Thank you.
Solomon, we usually have some questions from trustees when we put a student spotlight on there. And like Dr. Bound, I had a great time. We had breakfast together. If you haven't met and sat down with Solomon, please take advantage of the next year while he's here on campus, because he's going to go on and we're going to be able to say we knew him when. So, questions for him? Trustee Snyder?
Well, thank you for being here. You get the privilege of being the first student in person that we've seen. So it's always nice to see people face-to-face. You did a great job with Professor Shabazz. I'm curious, you started to allude to it with the Black Student Union, but are there any things that you want to reference to the trustees that we should be thinking about that can help you further your mission?
Yes, great question. I'm glad you asked that. Other than what can the trustees do? I personally believe it's more of a personal decision, what the students can do to help fulfill that. But one thing I hope we all do as a faculty here is to make this a safe environment for the college, to help welcome students to come in. Because understanding with what we have been through within this past year, we all need to come together and realize that if we want to get better, we have to set aside our differences and just grow together. And so part of my vision, as stated earlier, is just to make this a safe place for students to come in. Because I remember when I first came in as a freshman, it did feel like a safe place. But understanding, though, we were going through COVID, it was virtual, and so I always felt there was a lot of mental aspects that had focused in with them when we were going through the pandemic. But now that we are slowly coming out post-pandemic, it's my prayer and my goal that we continue to grow in numbers and just help grow as a college together. Because realizing that we are one of the top colleges across the state and the country, I want us to still continue to keep that high standing and high level of excellence as a college as well, too.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else here in the room? If not, I'll look...
You know I always...
Well, I will look toward trustee Lawson or trustee Cross virtually. Would you like to ask anything of Solomon?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you so much. Solomon, it is so good to see you in person there, and I wish that I was there to see that, to really meet you in person. Thank you so much for everything that you're talking about. And the one question that I have right now is, do you see any areas that you think the college can grow specifically that the board can work towards?
Yes, that is a great question. I'm glad you asked. As a student and as an employee here, and as a club president as well, too, where I can see growth in areas as a college, I just see, you know, more activities for students to evolve and more for students to take advantage of the resources we have here. Like, for example, we have the Student Basic Needs Center, where if students are going through things, they can have, like, you know, shelter assistance, food assistance. And we have many areas of, we have many areas of, like, we have the CNA program, we have media, we have Student Life Ambassador, which I'm a part of. And so the more important thing is that we, as students, to take action of the resources that we see set before us and to make best of our time here. Because even though Johnson County is a two-year university, it's best that we make the best two years possible. So when students transfer beyond and/or decide to come back to Johnson County and take more courses here, they make use of their academic career here as well, too.
Trustee Cross?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for being here. I really appreciate it. I took, I'm in a small group in my church, and we talked about, read a couple of different books about the experiences of minorities in different communities, specifically white communities. What's it like being a person of color to come to Johnson County Community College? Is it intimidating? Is it welcoming? Is it good?
That is a great question. I'm glad you asked that. Growing up, when I first came to Olathe in 2007, and then I started the Olathe School District in 2009, I was the only African-American person of color from second grade to sixth grade. But as I got, as I went from seventh grade and beyond, I started seeing more African-Americans in the classroom. So I will say, when I was younger, it kind of felt like sometimes I was the odd one out, because I was seeing not many people I could, you know, relate to or anything or talk to, because I kind of felt like the odd one out. But as I see now that colleges and high schools are now taking initiative of understanding the importance of African-American lives and all lives, no matter the different nationality or gender, it's important that we are able to understand and listen to each other's differences respectfully and peacefully. Because I've witnessed firsthand when someone shares a different political belief, that the other side got, in a way, agitated. And that is something we should not do as people, because we never know the importance of how someone's story can help us and help them. Being a listening ear, being humble, and being grateful can help us a lot. I will share a brief part of my testimony for a quick moment. So, back in 2016, I was unfortunately homeless for five years, living in a hotel room when my mom was still alive. But during that experience, it has taught me to be grateful, to be humble, and to be appreciative of all that I have. And I'm very grateful for my family, because a family that prays together stays together. And I'm very grateful that my family has been my strong support system and has helped me become the young man who I am today. I would also like to thank the Olathe School District, that has been tremendous support to me and my family as well, too. And as referring back to the question of how I feel as an African-American young man, I sometimes feel like the odd one out. But I will say, though, as I'm seeing more diversity, we need to continue to fight for more diversity across the lower education system and in the higher education as well, system, too, as we all just need to learn more about each other's story. And through those stories, we're able to build connections, be a strong support system, and just have more of a listening ear for one another.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Smith Everett?
Hi.
You really, you've got it...
Yeah, it's rare that I'm speechless, but you, young man, are remarkable.
Thank you.
So we are an all-white board, and I want you to feel free to speak to us about things that we may not be aware of as an all-white board in a position of power who can affect policies or procedures at the college. And you don't even have to answer this fully now, but, you know, throughout your position as the president of the Black Student Union, letting us know where there are opportunities for a pivot or a change in policy that allows for students of color like yourself?
Yes, ma'am.
Or a specific group, like ethnic or gender group, to be able to access what you've spoken about is really important, like the activities, like not feeling as though they're the only ones. Is there anything that comes to the top of your mind?
Great question. I'm glad you asked that. I understand, as you have stated earlier, that majority of the board is white. One thing that...
It's not the majority. It is all of us, actually. Yeah, so that's an important thing, that we're not walking in your shoes, and we need to constantly hear about students that are not like us, so that we make policies that help everybody.
Yes, ma'am. Completely understandable. The one thing that I would encourage and push was that we have more diversity across the board, because the diversity will help us become more educated, more humble, and more understanding. Because I will share a brief synopsis of my work experience. I worked at Chick-fil-A. That was my first job, and I was one of, and I was one of four. Without having that African-American representation, there wasn't that lack of, there wasn't that much diversity, and no one was able to understand each other. But in an education standpoint, it's best that we have diversity all over the board, so that way more history of other nationalities and minorities are heard about and talked about in important discussions. Because I will share one fact that I shared that I learned in a Black Student Union meeting I had in my senior year. A small portion of history books talk about African-American history, and most of it talks about the same thing. And as an African-American person myself, we need to talk about more about African-American history, like our music, our food, our culture, people that have made an impact in the African-American history. But not just in African-American history, but in all nationalities' history, Mexican history, Asian history, Chinese history. We need to make sure we understand that more and just have a listening ear. And as stated earlier, referring back to your question, the more we strive to push for diversity across the board, me personally, I feel that would help us to become more humble and more listening to one another. And that will really help enlighten our college standards as well, too, is that we, that this college cares about diversity. And I understand this college also cares about the mental state of our board, of our faculty and our students, because realizing how important mental health is, it's important that we also take that seriously as well, too. Because as stated earlier, the pandemic has affected us either physically, mentally, emotionally, and/or spiritually. But as we're taking this year to simply regrow and heal, it's best that we also align that our mental health is important as well, too.
Thank you so much.
Well, I will wrap it up. Trustee Laura Smith Everett kind of gave a nice little introduction before she gave her question, so I was kind of counting on saying some of those things about just keeping your voice in front of us. I think that's extremely important. I know you are part of the Bridge to Success Program through the Olathe School District. You're a very dear person to a very close friend of mine, and she had told me that you were going to try to take that job at Chick-fil-A and work here on campus, so we hope to see you working on campus, too. But anyway, thank you for coming. Your leadership and your words tonight are really important to all of us, so we are listening and we appreciate your continuing to communicate with all of us. So thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that. And that's the next thing I would like to align on, too, for a brief problem in my closing, the importance of communication, because it's important to communicate well. Because I was referred to a question that asked me, someone asked me, would you rather communicate well or communicate a lot? And I'd rather communicate well, and that's something we should all strive to continue as human beings, is to communicate well, and to make sure that we're communicating rightly and thoroughly as well, too. Because we communicate a lot, and it's not good. But if we communicate well and just simply listening to the importance of our ideas, that will help us a lot. And again, I thank you all for allowing me to come and speak for you all. It's been such a blessed, humbled honor and privilege to speak before you all, representing all that I'm a part of and all that made me become the young man who I am today.
Solomon, thank you.
Thank you.
Two words you said early on are difficult these days: humble and patient. Our culture's not very good at either one of those, so I think this board would like to help you make humility and patience a little bigger part of our culture.
Definitely.
Dr. Bound, you have any closing comments for Solomon?
I just, Solomon, again, thank you so much for being with us tonight.
Thank you.
You represent all that we believe we are and all that we believe to become and wish to become as a college. And I'm so pleased that you've stepped into the leadership role with the Black Student Union and get to lead that really important group in the life of the college. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's always good to start with something that's positive.
Start strong.
The next item on our agenda is the open forum. The open forum is a period during each regularly scheduled board meeting, when members of the public can speak to the board regarding items related to the college. Generally, we allow five minutes for those. If there's a larger group of people, the chair can reduce that to three minutes. During the time when we're on both Zoom and in-person, you need to register by 5:00 p.m. the night before, 5:00 p.m. on Wednesday, in order to participate by Zoom or by 4:45, if you want to participate in-person. There are no registered speakers tonight, so we will move on to the next agenda item. The next one is the board reports, and the first one is from our college lobbyist, Mr. Dick Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're at that point in the summer part of the interim session where there's very little going on. In fact, I'll kind of conclude with one of the things that happened today that will help set in motion what the rest of the summer and fall will look like. But I'll hit on a couple of high points from my report, and as I've been doing, I'll just talk in some bulleted fashion, so as not to repeat what has already been printed and presented to you. Excess revenues will certainly drive the conversation over the remaining portion of this summer and fall as we approach the coming legislative session. As I reported, the ending balance is nearly $2 billion more than what was anticipated. Legislators will look to fill some of the gaps that may exist. It certainly will become fodder for further tax policy discussions. And when I say that, I'm really speaking about reductions, whether that's a property tax discussion, an individual income tax reduction discussion. That will be all over the board, and I'll touch on that in just a minute. It also turns into campaign rhetoric. We're approaching a campaign year in 2022. A lot of our statewide offices will be up for election. It is the off-year for the Senate. We just had, the Senate was elected this past cycle, so the House members and folks in the occupied state offices will be running for office. And it will become a topic discussed in campaign, with the excess dollars in the budget and what that looks like in 2022. It will be necessary now, probably more than ever, to monitor the taxation and budget committees duly over the fall, as it makes recommendations to the legislature for the 2022 session. Also looking forward, one of the issues that Johnson County Community College is very interested and involved in is the Motorcycle and Truck Driver Training Fund and some of the proposed changes. That matter was tabled last session, but work will begin over the course of the summer, as the Board of Regents prepares to bring that issue back for 2022. And I will be working with the Board of Regents as we get that issue back into the mix. I will let Kate Allen talk about Promise, I believe, the Promise Scholarship Program here in a little bit, or whenever the time is appropriate. But the good news is, things are moving forward. And then finally, what I alluded to at the beginning of my comments was that the Legislative Coordinating Council met this afternoon, late this afternoon, to discuss interim committee topics, meeting dates, and matters like that. The committee approved all the requests at this point, but a memo, which is usually made available to folks, was not made available, still is not up on the Legislative Research website yet. But all of the requested topic areas were approved, along with most of the date requests. So nothing really surprising or out of ordinary. In particular, we will be watching tax and budget issues very closely. In fact, there was conversation at the conclusion of the Legislative Coordinating Council with regard to the Tax Committee, because it was a little bit vague in the way that it was presented. There was discussion about nonprofit slash public slash private competition. And that was a topic that came up at some point this session. We'll be very interested to watch that conversation and see what recommendations come from those discussions. Mr. Chair, I would stop there, and I'm sure there'll be some questions. I'll do my best to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Questions for Dick? Trustee Lawson or trustee Cross? Any questions?
I do. Thank you, Dick, so much for this report. I know in your written report, you talked about critical race theory, and I think this is really talking about censorship, you know, what history lessons can teach and not teach. I know currently, there's about eight states that have banned teaching about integrated schools, and it looks like about nine others that are following step as well. There seems to be, of course, a strong preference for white history that completely removes anything that happened in history to anyone else. But you cannot tell the American story without telling it in whole. I think any history teacher would agree with that. I know our State Board of Education member, Ann Ma, recently was quoted in an article, and she said that we don't teach CRT in high schools and ever have. And I think that's, she's really right about that. So when I think about Brown versus Board and how a lot of the CTR has come from law, I just read an article on the American Bar Association talking about how the decision for Brown versus Board was because of what it was termed interest conversions, which is the, you know, interest, the conversions of interest, so that, you know, there's an achievement of racial equality while being accommodated only when it converges with the interests of white people. I think the problem with this is that people aren't really concerned with CRT, because they have no idea what it means. They just want censorship. So the last time the State House tried to weigh in, setting what we teach, was an attempt to introduce intelligent design in opposition to evolution. So is there a real desire to bring this up on the floor in this next session?
I believe that there is a bill in the works from some members of the Senate. And as you'll recall, the Senate body is incredibly far-right, as far as leadership is concerned. I think that a bill will be introduced. I don't know whether it will have a hearing or not. The person introducing the bill is likely not part of a committee, or is not the committee chair for where that issue might find itself. You were correct in that the school board, the State Board of Education had a discussion about that. And I think one of the other things that was mentioned at that meeting was that it is not, you touched on what Commissioner Ann Ma had to say. The board, I think, also agreed by consensus that there are no curriculum standards approved by KSDE related to critical race theory. I think it's something that we will continue to see, not only in Kansas, but like you said, across the nation. This coming legislative session, it's being made into a campaign issue. That's unfortunate, because I don't think it's a campaign issue, but that seems to be the direction things are going. But yes, I do think we will see a bill, and at some point, we'll have to analyze what the legislation looks like, and whether it's directed to K-12, or whether it's directed to higher ed, or both.
It just seems like probably what's going on is often too much. It's too difficult to explain why a family member was in a photo in the 1960s protesting the integration of schools, or that their family benefited financially from racist policies. So I think you're right. I think this is a campaign tool that they're using, so I appreciate your insight in it. Thank you so much.
I don't see any other questions, Dick. If you would come back every July with a $2 billion surplus, we would really like you.
I would love to do it, sir.
All right. Thank you for your help and your efforts. Next, we'll hear from Dr. Jim Leicher, our Faculty Association president. Jim, I see you on the screen, and I think they will unmute you, and you have the floor.
Okay, I'll assume I am unmuted. So, good evening. First, thank you to the FA Vice President Brett Cooper, who subbed for me last month and gave some good information on the work of our 12-month faculty over the summer. Every June and July, we, and by that I mean nine-month people, too, make our peace with constant but annoying questions from the uninformed, like, so, are you enjoying your time off? This year, the question is, will you be back on campus? Or the beloved, when will you be back to normal? That last one is what I want to address tonight, because I'm not sure any of us even know what normal is anymore, and if we did, I'm not sure returning to it is desirable. The Chronicle of Higher Ed released an article this week that I've shared on our list serve about the debates colleges and universities have had concerning the respective merits of online and in-person, and of synchronous and asynchronous classes. The author concluded that such debates, besides taking up a lot of time, are pointless, because realistically, all classes in the future will be some kind of hybrid. Textbooks, discussions, assignments, even lectures, to partial extent, are being digitized and integrated into classroom use, regardless of modality. That's not to say virtual learning will be universal. You've heard repeatedly from us about the challenges of testing and academic honesty. Of course, we're all concerned about enrollments. Nationwide, spring 2021 saw a nearly 10% drop in the number of community college students from the previous year, down almost half a million. Considering the high ratio who come from low-income households, it's worth asking how many of those simply opted out of online education from lack of basic resources like a computer. And we should remember that disciplines vary. For my colleagues in the technical programs who teach hands-on skill, the pandemic hasn't changed instruction as much as you might think. All that being said, still, Johnson County is largely a commuter-based community. Our students hold full-time jobs, they raise families, and some are pursuing degrees at other institutions while taking classes from us on the side. So the convenience of an online asynchronous education is something many have come to expect. I do have a reason for raising these points, since the phrase "doing what's best for students" is so often invoked. We should pause and ask how we really know what best means. I reached out to some of the deans to inquire about number of... I reached out to some of the deans to inquire about number of students on campus since the college reopened on June 7th. For the month ending July 6th, counseling reported 969 walk-ins, 471 of those face-to-face, 498 virtual, with a similar split of about 50/50 with slightly more on the virtual side for the 1,478 students who had appointments. Approximately 700 students have visited the resource centers, roughly 25% of those being in-person. When we look at the division offices staffed by deans and their admins, well, one reports 10 students, including their parents, dropping in since June 7th, and in another five who've walked in since early April. Does this mean students aren't being served? Of course not. It just means you wouldn't necessarily know it by looking out the parking lot. Anecdotally, when I started teaching in the 90s, I routinely have three or four students stop by during every office hour to get help or just visit. There was barely, barely time for a gulp of coffee. That changed dramatically about the time when email appeared. And yes, I know I'm dating myself. By contrast, during the entire last decade, I've had maybe two students pop in unannounced during posted office hours. However, the time I spend answering messages or holding meetings at times which are convenient for them, often evenings and weekends, has increased considerably. It's not always easy defining what a quality professor looks like. It's a lot easier to define what a bad one is. And I think we'll agree, it's one who is inaccessible. I'm no expert on pedagogy, but it seems education requires frequent interactions between professor and student. But where those interactions happen, whether by email or Zoom or in a classroom, matters less than whether a deep and meaningful dialogue is occurring. As you know, like every other institution, we're grappling with the question of how much can be done remotely and how much requires a physical presence. We're deceiving ourselves if we think this is all due to the pandemic. The trend goes back long before that. COVID just brought it into clearer focus. This is my roundabout way of saying what's best for students might be to give them more options and to trust the professionalism of faculty in determining where the best teaching and advising can occur. I believe Dr. Bound has shared with you the flexible work application procedure crafted by Human Resources. I and a few others from FA have looked at it and agree it's a good start at tackling these questions. Although it doesn't affect the instructional branch, it does affect counselors and other 12-month faculty whom Brett talked about last month. And it offers accommodations to our staff, who more than ever have become our partners. I hope as we transition to whatever this is going to be, we avoid the trap of thinking we're getting back to something, because we're not, we're going to something new, and make sure that we're not mandating people beyond campus simply from a perceived need to look open. Now, having made that call for modern flexibility as to location of work, I'd like to make an old-fashioned request. I believe in my 15 months as FA President, I've only delivered one board report from an actual podium. So if there's an opportunity to do this in a way other than Zoom in the near future, I will gladly take it. And that concludes my remarks.
Jim, you are welcome next month to come into the podium. As you know, we have limited room in our chamber. I, I will mention that we have, for those who would want to participate from the public, we have space on campus set aside where you can be physically present. You'll be watching this by, by a screen other than the few spaces we have here in the room. But Jim, we, we will have a chair for you in, in August if you'd like it because we like you here live as well.
I'll see you in August.
Questions for Dr. Leicher? Thank you. Trustee Cross, I see your little hand up. Your electronic hand, I'm sorry.
I don't care if you think my hand's small. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Professor Leicher, thank you for being here. You can blame me as much as anybody. I've asked the administration to enforce the, the spacing protocols. And I'm sorry I couldn't be there tonight. I had a, a family issue. With respect to CRT, I've read the article that, that Angelina, Trustee Lawson referenced. It's a good article. And I'm confused frankly by the sudden emergence of this in some consciousness of the public. But is CRT, it's a legitimate academic area of study? You're a history professor, Jim? Is that right?
That's the rumor.
Yeah.
So critical race theory, I'm giving you the highly abbreviated version here, but it actually emanated from the law schools to try to explain after the 1960s why inequality persisted despite the, the civil rights movements. And so CRT, to my knowledge, is really only taught at the graduate level. Now, that's not to say that there aren't some ideas and aspects of it that don't appear in undergraduate courses and maybe even occasionally in K-12, although as has been said, there is no state mandate in the curriculum standards that says CRT will be taught at that level. The, the frustration that I've had, and I have a lot of frustrations about this topic, but is that most of the people who are opposing it really don't know what it is. And I, I think I would concur with Trustee Lawson's comments earlier that the last time I saw something like this was with intelligent design in Kansas and the whole debate over creationism. And it smacks of academic censorship. My, my approach to this has always been, we don't indoctrinate, but how can students know if they like critical race theory or not unless they know what it is? And so that's, needs to be the obligation of our faculty to, to teach it. Oddly enough, the fact that it's now so much in the spotlight probably means that there's going to be more attention paid to it.
That, that's my goal. I, I concur too, and I just appreciate your perspective as a relative expert because there's a lot of nonsense out there about it and I think a spinning and a misreading of what it is. And I do concur with Trustee Lawson. I thank you for raising the issue. Mr. Chair, I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Jim, I think we'll let you go. Enjoy your work during the summer. I know you told me you've got a lot of things on your plate this summer. So good luck with that. We'll see you in August. The next item on the, on the agenda is a report from the Johnson County Education Research Triangle. Trustee Cross, do you have a report?
I do, just a brief one. We, we didn't meet, Mr. Chair. Thank you. But we did get a distribution report. Our distribution was up about 12.1%, up from 9, 9.3% last month. Another economic indicator in my head. We will meet again in October at this little startup called K-State Alatha on October 25th, 2021 at 7:30 a.m. And that, that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, Trustee Ingram.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Executive Committee is assisting in preparing the agenda for our next quarterly meeting, which will be the end of August, and it is scheduled to be in-person in Hutchinson. So we're extremely excited about getting everyone together for that in-person format. We are in the early stages of reviewing, reviewing our new trustee orientation. As we have new leadership, God, I can't talk since the last orientation was held, we are reviewing the content and anxious to provide information that provides an understanding of the state system as well as the work of the National Association. I'm proud to share that the leadership of Dr. Jerry Cook continues in some of the material we are reviewing and will be using. The majority of discussion work and time recently has been on the kickoff of the PROMISE Act. Collectively, KACC has done a great deal of the work on the development of the application process, supported by some of the JCC staff and others from across the state, which will be reported on by Dr. Bound and Kate Allen later in our meeting. On Monday, I joined Heather Morgan and Dan Murray, who is our KACC lobbyist, in a brief meeting with the governor to review the PROMISE Act and free college. The majority of that discussion provided work done on the PROMISE Act by KACC and to share KACC's support of increasing Pell funding for our students. Heather Morgan and Dan Murray will be involved in any follow-up that will need to be provided. So, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Questions about KACC? Will get a notice of when those, that data set for the quarterly meeting?
Yes, it's the end of August. It's the 26th, 27th, I believe.
Last weekend. Friday and Saturday.
Friday, Saturday.
Yes, Friday, Saturday.
Okay. The next item is the report from our foundation liaison, Trustee Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As everyone knows, the foundation exists to provide financial assistance to our students and the foundation is pleased to report that in the last academic year, $1.6 million was provided to students. That's a new record and doesn't even include the, the current summer semester or whatever we call the summer, summer period. So it's been great. Approximately 1,500 students were benefiting from those, those scholarships. So thank you to all the generous donors for the foundation and the Financial Aid Office who works closely with the foundation to make all that possible. The foundation's Executive Committee met on Tuesday, June 22nd at 5:00 p.m. And during that meeting, the foundation Executive Committee approved the foundation's current operating budget. Just as a reminder, the, the budget for the foundation is entirely separate from the college's general foundation. It's not supported by taxpayers, but instead funded by earnings off of the investments. And over half of this year's proposed budget, about $225,000, will be directed towards scholarship partnerships program, support grants, and special campus initiatives. The first foundation meeting of the new fiscal year will be Thursday, August 26th. It will be a foundation member social at the athletic complex. So trustees should have that on their calendar. With the new fiscal year, there's new leadership at the Board. I highlighted this last month, but Marshawn Butler is the new Foundation Board President and she serves as a leadership role at Children's Mercy and she's been on the foundation Board for a few years. So I think she's well-known to several of us here and will do a great job. Want to extend some thanks once again to Sues Parker, who ended a two-year term as Board President and did a great job leading the foundation through some challenging times during COVID. In addition to this, there were other appointments to the foundation's Executive Committee and directors and members. Trustees should have received a report from the foundation that listed all of those. And finally, the foundation is excited to return to in-person events coming up. There are a few events I want to highlight. The first is the Center of Sustainability's Harvest Dinner. That is August 27th here at the college. A great program focused on scholarships for sustainable agriculture. I've been to that event several times. It's a, a good one to keep in front of you. More information should be coming to trustees in your mailboxes soon. Lace Up for Learning 5K Walk Run is Sunday, October 10th with proceeds benefiting scholarships as well. I've done that event as well. The foundation, the Harvest Dinner is more fun, but both events are worthwhile to do. And of course, Summer Chanted Evening will be November 13th. Major events, opportunities are available and individual tickets and sponsorships are being communicated as we speak. Would like to thank trustee Cross for being one of the first committed major event sponsors. And that concludes my foundation update.
Questions for trustee Snyder? If not, we're going to move into our committee report.
One quick comment.
Sure, Dr. Bound.
I just, this has just come to my attention that trustee Snyder has agreed to serve as the rabbit for the race in the 5K.
Are you giving me an ATV?
And trustee Cross, he let you off the hook so you don't have to do it. So anyways, now, we appreciate both of your support of the foundation and from all of you as trustees.
Mr. Chair, somewhere I read, if you find too big a rabbit, it might end up in a pie. So that's, that's good. Not the rabbit.
All right, let's move into the, the meat of the agenda then. We have 27 different recommendations that came from our Committee of the Whole meeting. The Board is now meeting, all seven of us as a committee of the whole, a couple weeks before our regular Board meeting to go through some of the details of the agenda for tonight. And we have 27 items that Vice Chair Snyder is going to present. All of these were discussed at the Committee of the Whole. And so we hope we can get through these in a relatively efficient fashion. But it is a burden, Paul, that we've, I've dumped on you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So everyone settle in. This is a little bit longer report than the foundation report, so we'll, we'll get started. The Committee of the Whole met on June 28th with six trustees participating. Rachel Lear's and a host of others provide an overview of how the college is supporting students and the college through the use of COVID-related relief funds. To date, the college has received almost $40 million with more than a third of those funds directly supporting students. Rachel Lear's also provide an overview of Senate Bill 13 and the changes the community college must make relative to the budget consideration and approval process. The Johnson County Clerk was supposed to inform the college by today what the current revenue neutral rate is. I assume that happened. I don't know what that is, but if people are interested, I'm sure Rachel can inform them. The college must notify the county clerk by August 25th if we're going to exceed that revenue neutral rate. You'll recall on May 13th, we passed the management budget. Therefore, we have elected to exceed that, that neutral rate. And at our September meeting, we will hold a public hearing regarding our plan to exceed the rate. And immediately following that, the Board will hold our normal public hearing that we typically do for the budget to approve it. Both these, after these two hearings, will consider the proposed official college budget. So thank you to Rachel and the rest of your team for figuring out how this new process will work. And this is kind of our test year and we'll do everything officially next year. I have several recommendations for tonight to consider. They were all discussed, as the Chair mentioned, at the Committee of the Whole meeting and all are recommended by the administration. And if it's acceptable to the Board, we're going to break it up into four different groups that are, are highlighted on our agenda. The first group are single or sole source purchases. These are items A1 through 6 on the agenda. So I will move the approval of the single source purchases as presented in the Board Packet, including Alucion in the amount of $1,316,787, Sirius Computer Solutions in the amount of $1,65,878, Apple in the amount of $500,000, Canren in the amount of $175,000, McConnell &amp; Associates in the amount of $342,527, and then Scott Rice Steelcase in the amount of $174,742.83. Not sure why that last one got down to the cents, but we're recording it that way. So that is the motion.
Moved by trustee Snyder, seconded by trustee Ingram. Is there any discussion or are there any questions? Trustee Cross.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I think you best explain, just as the public, and there really are some informed people who watch this, but if anybody's watching for the first time, you do a good job of explaining that these are necessary and routine items that are generally our staff and administration has taken bids on. Would you mind explaining that, what we're spending?
On the, on the single source item, this first group, these are, these are items where there is only one source that we have used for those. Those are often, I'm thinking of software programs where we already have the software and we need to update it. So we can't buy somebody else's software or somebody else's equipment. So this first group are all single source purchases that were reported to the Board at the Committee of the Whole and explanation for those was included in the Committee of the Whole Packet. So that's what this first group is.
I know, but you just do a better job. Thank you.
Notice further discussion, all those in favor of the motion approving items A1 through 6 on the agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. That motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. The next grouping is for purchases greater than $150,000, which do require Board approval. This includes items A7 and A8. I move the approval of the Parking Garage Repairs Award as presented in the Board Packet in the amount of $149,368 plus a 10% contingency for a maximum estimated expenditure of $164,304.80 to Pullman Power LLC and a multi-year award for the online cybersecurity assessment training proposal as presented in the Board Packet to Anthony Timbers LLC for a base year of $128,900 and a total estimated expenditure of $225,700, including renewal options through 2024.
Second.
Moved by trustee Snyder, seconded by trustee Cross. And again, for the public, all of these are listed individually and explained separately in the budget packet, in this case, beginning at page nine. Questions or discussion about this motion for items A7 and A8? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? That motion carries 6-0.
The next grouping is for on-call services reflected on the agenda is A9 to 20. These are contracts for on-call services for architecture, carpentry, civil engineering, codes consulting. codes consulting, and building inspections, electrical repair and installation, landscape architecture and design, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineering, structural engineering, painting and wall covering services, plumbing services, parking garage consulting services. Multiple vendors were selected for these services after procurement review. The awards and contracts may or may not be used based on college needs, and additional details on all the vendors and amounts are listed in the board packet on pages 13 and 14. I move the approval of on-call services for base year and all renewal options through June 28, according to the specific labor rates as presented in the board packet.
Second.
I think you said June 2028, it's June 2026?
Yes.
Okay. Questions or discussions about these? And I'll, I'll try on this one, trustee Cross. If we need a plumber, we don't go out and call a bunch of plumbers. We have three plumbers on call, and then we have vetted and bid, bid out, and we, we will pick one of them for our plumbing problem. So any other questions or discussion? If not, all in favor of that motion for items A, A, excuse me, I want to get to where we are.
A9 to A20.
Yeah, A9 through A20, signify by saying aye.
Yes.
Opposed, nay. That motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, and good description on the all call, on-call services. Our final group of considerations are adjustments to policies. The college routinely reviews policies to ensure we're in compliance with state and federal laws, but importantly, to support students and improve operations. Policies are listed on the agendas, A21 to 27. There's also redlined versions in the board packet to explain what everything does. I will briefly highlight each of them. The first is the disposition of surplus policy, Policy 21507. The recommended change clarify that surplus property will not be disposed of via trash unless there is no other viable option. The financial aid policy 31301 is recommending changes clarifying the beginning of the financial aid year and the process for submitting an appeal. Policy 41508 is suspension, demotion, and termination. The recommended changes clarify the requirement that employees can be notified in writing of suspension and incorporate information from the suspension, demotion, and termination appeal policy in 41601. We are deleting Policy 41601, suspension, demotion, and termination appeals. The recommended change moved the entirety of this policy into the one that I previously mentioned. Employee compliance policy 42101, we are modifying this. The recommended changes add an applicability statement, cleanup policy references, and standardize the retaliation language. Dating and relationship policy 423.02, recommend changes add an applicability and purpose statement and add reference to the human, I'm sorry, excuse me, to the sexual harassment and employee discrimination policies. And then finally, our weapons policy 660.00. The recommended changes bring the policy into compliance with new legislation, House Bill 2058, which went into effect this year, granting reciprociousity, excuse me, to concealed carry to those who are licensed in other states or who have a valid license in Kansas. Additional changes include adding a purpose statement, moving definitions from footnotes to a definitions section. So before I make a motion, are there any questions on any of those policies that anyone has?
Trustee Smith-Everett.
I have one, and I apologize if I didn't catch it. At Committee of the Whole, the suspension, demotion, and termination policy 415.08, I just wanted to get clarification. What was added at the bottom was unprofessional conduct, and I didn't see, I had a similar question about, I think in the student policies, we had something about academic, they had to be academic efficiency, I'm getting that wrong, academic something, and we have a definition of that, academic. Thank you, that's right there, that's it. But we don't have, I couldn't find a definition of unprofessional conduct. I wondered if I could just get a clarification of what that is.
I don't understand why you're not addressing it to me.
I'm sorry. I would like to know the definition of unprofessional.
Yeah, I don't see Leslie, so I'm not sure.
She actually is on screen.
Yep.
I'm here, sorry. So unprofessional conduct was not a, an addition. It's actually just rewording from non-professional conduct to unprofessional conduct. While I agree there's not a formalized definition there, we traditionally, you know, understand what unprofessional conduct would be, similar to yelling, bullying, being aggravating to an excessive, so anything that is unprofessional, that, for the common sense, would result into somebody saying that's unprofessional.
And that was Leslie Harden, our vice president for human resources.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Other questions about any of the policies that trustee Snyder has run through that we've seen before? I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay. I move the approval of the changes to the following policies, Policy 21507, 313.01, 415.08, 421.01, 423.02, and 660.00, as well as the deletion of the policy 416.01. Those are all the ones that I previously highlighted, and again, on the agenda are A21 through A27.
Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee, moved by trustee Snyder, seconded by trustee Smith-Everett to adopt those revisions, those policies, revisions and deletions. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make a comment. I know the trash policy was something that I had requested to put in the Committee of the Whole, and I wanted to commend you. Thank you so much for adding that to the agenda so that we could have a genuine, open discussion about that and add that one extra line where it requires an item that could be set for trash, as trash to be the last absolute resort. And I got further clarification from our president, Dr. Bound, that that item, not only is it the last stop, it's, there's a lot of pieces, so it's not a whole items that could be thrown in the trash. There's a lot of focus around sustainability and making sure parts and everything are recycled. I know over the years, we've had a lot of concern about this policy, especially when we raised the value from 25 to 50. So just making sure that the accountability is there, and that small textual change makes a big difference towards the accountability, and I appreciate that. So I just wanted to say thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. With that, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Those policy changes are adopted 6-0.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the Committee of the Whole report.
I completely underestimated your ability. I apologize. Thank you for getting us through those. President's recommendations for actions, Treasurers' Report, trustee Cross.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Treasurers' Report can be found on page 37 of the PDF and the following pages. The packet actually includes the Treasurers' Report for the month ended May 31, 2021. Some items of note include, on page one, is the General Post-Secondary Technical Education Fund summary. May was the 11th month of the college's 2020, 2021 fiscal year. The college's general fund unencumbered cash balance was $86 million as of May 31, 2021. In May, the college made scheduled payments totaling $174,600 on the Series 2012, 2015, and 2019 revenue bonds, and an ad blorum tax distribution of $44.2 million was received from Johnson County in June and will be included in next month's report. Mr. Chair, expenditures in the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits according to our board policies, and it is therefore, Mr. Chair, the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurers' Report for the month ended May 31, 2021, subject to some audit.
Is that a motion?
I saw move.
Moved by trustee Cross.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Snyder to approve the Treasurers' Report, subject to audit, for the report through May 31, 2021. Any discussion or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. We're ready for Dr. Bound's monthly report.
All right. Well, thank you all very much. If we could bring up the PowerPoint and remind me when I stick on the screen too long, when you want to switch back to me, and I'll do that. Today, I just want to do a couple items, three items in particular. As always, I start with the, the student report that we do earlier in the meeting. Again, we are just so fortunate to serve our students, and Mr. Webb is a good example of one of our many fine students. I want to talk real quickly about enrollment, or at least talk about enrollment, and then an update on the strategic plan, and then close out with a report and update on the Kansas Promise Scholarship Program. We didn't bring this up at the time, but the picture on the left side of the screen of Solomon, his sister, and his grandmother, I thought it was important to include that in there. They have such a tight relationship, and you heard him speak several times about the importance of family. And so anyways, Solomon, thank you. All right, summer enrollment, the numbers just, they don't change once we get as far into the summer as we are, and so they're holding steady at eight and a half percent, down from a headcount standpoint and 9.3 from a credit hour standpoint. If we move and, and look about, and I reported to you last time about, about the continuing ed enrollment, again, when we compare it to last year, the numbers certainly look good. You can tell that we're, you know, rebuilding from 2020 as we move through this summer. Their enrollment grew by about 715 students in the last month. In, in talking to Elisa Waldman, our interim vice president for continuing education, you know, she reminded me again that 5,000 students is certainly within the realm of, of a realistic goal and target for the summer. In particular, in the month of August, is when we see the, the significant enrollment from an adult education standpoint. We'll gain on average of about 800 students during that time, and then their ongoing work with workforce development in serving employers and serving individuals around work-based training. So again, that continues to be a strong, a, a strong area of performance for us as a college. I'm very pleased. In addition to that, when we look to fall, you know, a little cautionary note here. If, if you recall, last month, we were up about 125%, if I remember correctly-ish, and the day before, we were up 800% over the previous year. As you can see, the enrollment cycle, or if you recall to last summer, the, the start of the enrollment and registration period for fall semester was significantly delayed as we moved through the COVID, early days of COVID. As we look at where we are now, you'll see that the trend line is tracking, from a trend standpoint, very close to 2019. Again, it's a difference between the, the blue line and the green line being, green line being 2019. You know, in order to hit our enrollment goal of being up 1% this year, for fall semester, that means by census date, we need to be, by the start of the semester, adding the better part of 800 students per week in order to hit that goal. We're pretty close to that number right now in terms of weekly gains from an enrollment standpoint. And when I compare again back to 2019, we're a couple percentage points ahead of where we were at that point, comparing to 2019, kind of our number. So we're ahead of where we were at a pace wise in 2019. The numbers, raw numbers, aren't above, but we're growing enrollment steadily. The end-of-term goal for this fall semester is 18,170 students, and that means that we're, in order to get that and look at a pretty traditional fall semester from enrollment standpoint, we typically see about a 7% increase in enrollment between census date and, and the end of the month of December. Again, keeping in mind that the winterum session falls within the fall enrollment calculations. And, and in that, we also know that about 4,200 or so students each fall semester are concurrent or other high school students. So anyways, you know, cautious with the 16%, but I know that our team's working hard, and we'll talk more about initiatives when we get into the college, college promise discussion here in just a moment.
When do we ask questions?
You may, you may.
You may ask questions as you.
Can you repeat that again? You said 18,000?
So the, the 1% over last year for fall semester puts us at 18,170. That's the number that's ingrained in my head that we're shooting for. Again, that's last year plus 1%.
And then we had discussed, and maybe this is what you were just referring to about talking about later, but we had discussed one enrollment strategy would be to reach out to those that dropped or didn't finish. Is that contributing to some of this that we're seeing in the uptick? Or is that not been?
I think, I think part of the, much of the uptick, and Dr. Webb, we're feel free to jump in here, much of the uptick is, part of it is just that we started sooner, right? The enrollment trends look just, at this point, from a headcount standpoint, look just like 2019. And so of the blend of activities, whether it's calling former students and getting them back in, whether it's existing students, our teams are working hard.
May I ask a question? If I remember correctly, the alignment of concurrent students in our classes starting last year was, was off. Do we expect that to be back to normal?
Dr. McLeod, do you expect that to look much more like normal?
At this point, I think it is, a lot of that was tied to an inability by the school districts to sort out how they were going to deliver courses and having to move qualified personnel to other courses because of losses elsewhere. So we could not pin down all of the instructors that we needed for the appropriate coursework. That does not seem to be a problem this year. We've seen pretty strong growth from our high school partners, and we know that there is going to be at least an increase of almost 100 to 120 students in the on-campus program that we've been working through Valley as we start to expand that and start to include this setup.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Keep moving it along. John, would you like to come up and, and walk us through just a quick update to keep strategic planning in front of us? John, if you'll give us a quick update on where we're at.
Tell us, tell us who you are, please.
That's the first thing I have in my notes here. Introduce myself.
All right.
So I'm John Clayton. I'm the Executive Director of Institutional Effectiveness Planning and Research here at Johnson County Community College. Got three, three main points I want to update you guys on today. The first one is the work of the teams that have been developing the strategies as coming to a close. I think the, we'll have everything in, in a first round of draft for our upcoming strategies to add to the strategic plan by tomorrow. So they, they've been doing a lot of hard work over the summer, and it's been appreciated. I think most of them have met probably about three times. From that point, those strategies then will be presented to the Strategic Planning Council, and they will actually look and see, is there duplication, is there alignment, things that we need to worry about, and evaluate those, and send that feedback back to those strategy teams to, to finalize that out. And then that gets sent back, then there will be, they'll develop some solid language around that to help define more clearly what those strategies are. So that's, that's the work of the strategy teams. It's been, it's been a very busy summer for them. The next thing that we did is we actually developed a data strategy team, and that, that team is going to be focused on helping us define our metrics. So how do we measure when we're being successful in our strategic plan? So they're going to look at the goals and the strategies, make sure that the metrics that are recommended to the Strategic Planning Council and Cabinet align, and help us measure what we think it's measuring. And then we'll be using those then to help us identify whether or not we're making progress. And you guys can be able to use that to hold us accountable to say we're already making progress or not on your strategic plan. Those are, the intent is for that those will be forwarded to the Board of Trustees for approval with the strategic plan in October. So you guys will get a chance to look. So you guys will get a chance to look at those ahead of time. The other purpose for this data strategy team is to help us tell our story. How can we use our data to help better tell our story to the community, to the campus, to our constituents? And I want to close out with just the next steps for the strategic plan, so that you guys can see what we are going to be doing over the next several months. As I mentioned earlier, the Strategic Planning Council and Cabinet's going to review the draft strategies, send their changes back to the strategy teams. Once they've reviewed that and kind of helped firm those up a little bit, the data strategy team is going to look at those metrics and start evaluating what metrics we have, what data we have, are there gaps that we need to do? That'll happen August, September. We heard your feedback from the retreat that we had, and we've moved up the, excuse me, I forgot. Campus is going to get the opportunity to feedback first, and they'll provide some feedback to us in August during around professional development days, and then the external constituents, the external community is going to get a chance to provide some feedback that'll happen in August and September. And then we will plan to bring that plan forward to the Board of Trustees for your consideration for adoption in October, and once you guys have adopted it, we'll begin to implement the plan and carry out those action plans and develop those. Any questions I can answer for any of you?
I have a question first. We talked a lot about getting the broader community involved, so it's not just an on-campus or not accused of being an ivory tower strategic plan, and I appreciate the fact you built that in. I'm wondering, since Alicia's here, and we mentioned workforce development, continuing ed, how do we use our contacts in the community with our non-credit students through continuing ed and workforce development to get the word out to them directly that, hey, there's a strategic plan going on?
We have several different listservs, and during the pandemic, that's what we used as emails to send out, and we brought all those together, and then we sent out several emails to have them provide, then the opportunity to provide us input through the SWOT analysis. So we used those at that point in time. Dr. Brown and I was talking, we're going to do a two-pronged approach on this. We are going to do a community survey, develop a community survey that will be sent out and open to anybody in the community that wants to, and we'll be using that same opportunity there to distribute that out. The other thing we're doing is we're actually going to try to do some face-to-face with some of our community members. There's just something special about being able to bring focus groups in and have that face-to-face connection, and so that's in the plan as well, to reach out and do that.
Thank you. Trustee Smith-Everett.
Yeah, so you asked part of one of my questions, which was, what forms of feedback are we getting? So that's for the external community. What will we be doing? How will we be getting feedback from our internal community?
During the professional development days, we have that whole week there that we do for professional development days. We'll be doing several different sessions during that time to talk about what's happened over the summer because faculty have been gone. We've had faculty involved with that development, but the faculty as a large whole have been gone, and then we'll be doing some listing sessions and some town halls during PDD days to collect that information back in.
So the specifics would be that they're going to communicate in a whole group, like listening session, or will there be like a survey component in those listening sessions? Or will there be some kind of, you know, metric? Is it still being developed? I'm thinking...
Yeah, no, absolutely. I typically like to do a two-pronged approach. I typically like to do that survey so those individuals that don't feel comfortable talking in a large group have that venue to provide feedback. But like I said earlier, there's just something special about that face-to-face interaction dialogue that happens, and so that's the plan, is to probably do both.
Okay. My other question was, who is on the data strategic team? I don't mean names, but positions? Like what, give me a...
It's broad. We have faculty, we have pretty much the representation, I believe, from every different area around campus, at least one from every different branch of the college. So it's broad, everybody from CE to faculty to, and I think faculty is both CTE as well as gen ed, so both are represented. We have some folks from my area, Student Success Engagement, IS, finance area, so it's a broad representation. We intentionally did that to make sure everybody was represented.
Yep. All right, thank you.
Go ahead, John, or if you're done.
That's it.
Are there any other trustees that aren't in the room? Questions? Yeah, I can't.
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, John.
My pleasure.
All right, and then the last section, and actually, we don't need to bring the slides back up because it says Kansas Promise. And so Kate, would you like to come up? Introduce yourself, and then let's jump in.
I'm Kate Allen. I serve as vice president for advancement and government affairs here on campus, and Dr. Brown asked that I T F conversation on the Kansas Promise Fellowship Act, which was signed by the governor in late March. I want to share a special thanks to our Johnson County delegates, who were very strong leaders proponents of this legislation. I also want to thank Dick Carter for his work for the last many months advocating on our behalf for this in Topeka, and trustee Ingram, who served as president of our statewide association. They have carried a lot of the water to get this to where we are today, so three thank yous to lead with. The legislative intent behind this bill is to support workforce development within our borders, within Kansas. The basic premise is to provide no-cost tuition books and materials to certain credit students taking certain eligible credit programs. There are some income thresholds in place. For example, for a family of three, the max income is $150,000. It's a sliding scale, and credit students must be a recent Kansas high school graduate within the last 12 months, or they can be an adult, 21 and older, but they have to have lived in Kansas for at least three years. The students have to enroll in one of the eligible programs. The bill says there's four programs. Every school got to pick their own fifth program. So the four legislated programs are information tech and security, physical and mental health care, early childhood ed, and then the fourth is advanced manufacturing and building trades. And every program within those categories is covered. So when I say physical and mental health care, all of our CNAs, all of our RNs would be part of that promise program. The fifth choice that we selected after a discussion with Cabinet was our American Sign Language and Interpreting Program. So that's the fifth one that we're offering. It is a last-dollar program. That means that a student has to take the time to fill out the FAFSA. We need to see if they've got any federal aid coming to them. That has to be applied first. They will fill out the JCC Foundation Scholarship application, see if they're eligible for any of that funding, institutional aid. All of that goes first. If there's any balance, and they are continuing to be eligible for promise, those funds would be applied, until they're zeroed out. Students then sign a contract. The contract's been finalized, so that's great news. And we actually have 10 students today who have filled that out, and we have other inquiries as well. Soon, that contract, that application, which is through the border regions, will be on our website, just linked to the region's website. So that's exciting that that's already happening. Again, though, it is a Kansas workforce development program, so what that student is signing onto when they sign the contract is that they will work and live in Kansas for two years when they graduate. There are some deferral options if they do military or something like that, but that's the basic premise of the bill. So as it stands, if we have a JCC grad, lives in Kansas, gets a job on the Plaza, they would have to return the money. They would have to repay that scholarship, and that's again because it's being funded by Kansas taxpayers for a Kansas workforce program. So the budget, the bill set up $10 million to be used across the state. The regions have determined that our share is just shy of 1.9 million. We will get that in increments as we spend it down. And again, that 10 million is going to other community colleges, technical colleges, and there are a few other private four-years that offer associate's degrees in those four legislated eligible areas. So that's the group that's impacted. I want to thank Kelsey Nazar as well. I think a huge reason why we haven't executed agreement that is signed now by our president is because of her work, and that was just really important and very timely, or a lot of time on her behalf to get that to where it needed to be, so thank you to Kelsey. What we are working on now is serving those students who are interested. We are working on getting or seeking clarity on some of the remaining issues that we still need to get ironed out with the border regions, and then finally, making sure our team is up to date on all of the nuances and complexities of this bill so we can advise properly. There's been a work group since this was signed, earlier in the spring, that was formed internally. We have student services on there, I mean, admissions. We have counselors, we have the Bursar's Office, we have our marketing team, we have institutional research, obviously legal. It has been a huge multi-department effort to get this stood up. It's still very manual. It's still very case-by-case, student-by-student, but it's going to be transformational, and we're going to get there. It's been a little bit rocky so far, but it's really exciting for our state, for our community, and as the word gets out, I think it's really going to catch on. So I'm excited about that, and I just want to thank all of those different departments. Counseling as well was on here, I'm not sure I mentioned them, that have worked really hard to make sure they can advise properly, because the student is signing up for a two-year work-liver, and if not, they're paying it back. So advising is just really crucial as to what's best, in their best interest for their unique situation, so I want to thank them. Am I bringing up someone after me? Dr. Brown? Okay. I'll turn it back over to you, unless there's any questions.
I know there will be some questions.
You might just sit tight up here for now.
How much is an individual student eligible to receive? Is it based on need, or is there a cap for individual students?
As long as they're eligible within that sliding scale of income, it could be up to the full cost of that schooling if they don't have any Pell or any other foundation scholarships or any other outside money, then they would pay for the full cost of the program.
And I know that this is the first year, and we're just happy to get the legislature to fund it and approve it. I think it's important going forward for a border county, for us, for Kansas City, Kansas Community College, probably for Fort Scott, probably, you know, for, I don't know, others to live or work and/or live in Kansas. That's going to reduce a lot of our folks' ability if they, because there are jobs here, and we move back and forth across our border. So I think that, I'm hoping that someday in the future, we can recognize that there's still an advantage of having somebody work here even if they live in an apartment across this, or vice versa. So trustee Smith-Everett, you had a question?
Just clarification, you said 1.9 million is our share. Who is us?
So 1.88 to Johnson County Community College.
Okay, that is just, that's not a regional...
Correct, to our institution.
Okay.
And maybe just to build on that, it will come in most likely two allotments, two amounts. The first amount will be approximately $629,000, and the balance 1.2 whatever later in the year. We built into the agreement with the Kansas border regions is a process that would allow, if we have greater need than the dollar that has been allotted to us, or another college has the same experience, there'll be a process by which we can request additional funds. Again, it's not to exceed the statewide max of cap of 10 million, but, and when you calculate the amount to serve a student, you need to be thinking about the full academic year. So, yeah.
There's no funding for big, large signs that say you're leaving Kansas, don't take the job, because you will have to pay back. There's no funding for that?
That's a six-page document that they signed.
Yeah. A sandwich board for trustee Smith-Everett standing in, stay alive. Other questions? I want to know, what happens to two-year student that then transfers to one of the Kansas four-year schools? That's... So if a student starts with us in one of the eligible programs, transfers on to one of our great four-year partners, that defers to the completion of that degree, and then the two-year starts. And what if they don't complete that four-year degree?
This program is for two-year degrees, so that's not, doesn't rely on their bachelor's degree, as long as they've completed with us, or whatever two-year school they went to.
So they would go here two years, say they go to K-State for two years but don't get their degree, their two years of living and working in Kansas would start at the end of that, after four years?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Trustee Lawson, and then trustee Cross. I see both of you are hands up.
Okay. I just want to say, one of the first ACCT conferences in DC, I learned about college promise, and I remember being so excited and coming home and consulting with college promise on the phone when they were so new, and reading the studies coming out of Tennessee, and talking to trustee Dr. Cook at the time, and he had learned so much about college promise as well and the success rates. I remember meeting with Dr. Randy Weber and seeing how excited he was that there was a trustee that was interested in pushing this forward, and then when I was a KCCT liaison at the time on the National ACCT's Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, I was really glad to advocate for this. So seeing and being able to talk to so many statehouse representatives, I'm very grateful to legislators on both sides of the aisle. I've had to be able, the honor to be able to continue to advocate for free education and for the expansion of opportunities for students. So I am so happy to see so much of this come to fruition, so I'm just very grateful for everybody. So thank you so much.
Trustee Cross.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I had to be excited about it, and what happens if a student goes to UMKC or Virginia?
The education deferral is triggered, and then when they would complete or come back to Kansas, hopefully then it would be, their two-years time would start.
Other questions? I don't have a lot to add to that, but if I were you, I might be wondering, well, how are you promoting this? How are, you know, what happens from here forward? And so, just, you know, just very quickly, since signing the agreement, the teams have moved into all of the final training work that needs to happen. Certainly, you can appreciate while there's a complexity to this, our team's job is to take the complexity and make it understandable to our students. And so, you know, primarily Dr. Weber's team, but also in the Bursar's Office, really understanding how this works and being able to guide students so that they make a well-informed decision means that our team needs to really understand this. And so, not only our team, but consistently across the state, with not only Johnson County Community College, but all of our community college partners, our technical colleges, and then the private schools that have associate degree programs in the four allowed areas plus their own, we're trying to find that consistency. So there's a great deal of coordination that's happening statewide. As Kate mentioned, we certainly have interest already, and applications are coming in, and students are asking, but we hit it. The full court press starts next week, and so all of the marketing and, you know, the efforts to target existing students who may be eligible for the promise program, those who are undeclared, the recent high school graduates, adult students, and, you know, very specific targeted communication to, here's an opportunity that you need to be aware of. And so this next several weeks will be about standing it up and encouraging students to come, and then to help them think through. I think, you know, just one more build on in what Kate said. She talked about the, kind of that general eligibility requirement, filling out the FAFSA and so forth. It is eligible, students who are eligible and meet the other criteria, there's a household income criterion that for a household of two is up to 100,000. So there's, if you think about kind of Pell eligibility, and then you think about these income requirements, a household of two, 100,000, a household of four, you know, more like 150,000, and then there's like 4,800 on top of that for additional household members. There's a sweet spot of students that we've not been able to serve from a financial aid standpoint, at least, you know, large numbers of students, certainly from individual scholarships and so forth. But this creates a tremendous opportunity for those students who fit in that gap of, I'm not Pell-eligible, but golly, I don't know how I'm going to pay for college. If you want to go into a high-demand, high-wage, high-need program, this is a perfect opportunity for them. And again, as you've heard, this is a, you know, a statewide program developed by the state of Kansas, all focused on, you know, growing our workforce here. And so, you know, I just want to reiterate my great appreciation for our team internally here. You know, certainly, Kelsey was recognized, as were the other departments, worked so hard, not only preparing to serve students, but in making sure that we get an arrangement, a program that can work well to serve students and is reasonably manageable from an operational standpoint, and to Governor Kelly and Speaker Reichman and Senator Baumgartner, our entire Johnson County delegation. Your vision to get this done this year creates tremendous opportunity, and... And very excited about what this does. You know, what I don't want you to hear is this is the, you know, the silver bullet, the magic pill that we were looking for that's going to solve any enrollment challenge that we've ever had. It probably isn't going to be that. In fact, I think Mike Neal, who came from Tennessee, would say, you know, over time it grew enrollment by maybe 10%. So it isn't like we're going to turn on the floodgate tomorrow and here we go. But it is a tremendous opportunity for students, and it will impact our enrollment. And so I just thank you now to our team that's working so hard to make this happen. So that concludes my report.
More comments on the report, Trustee Smith Everett?
I don't want to drag this on anymore, but I did have two more questions.
You're not dragging.
So do we have the potential, thinking about the foundation, partnering with the foundation? So I'll direct this question at you, Paul, that we have, we will have a group of students. I was thinking about that, too, that's sort of that sweet spot of students that are a little more, make a little more in their families but don't qualify, some of the federal programs, but still don't have money to go to college. Do we have an opportunity to partner with our foundation for those that come to us, they're interested, and for whatever reason, they either don't qualify or it's not the program, they came thinking it was a certain program that is not in that, that we can find a way to give some kind of, you know, financial support to, so those students can come to JCC?
Yes, the answer is yes.
Yes. I mean, I will say the foundation doesn't exclusively just do awards based on, I mean, there are many donors that direct to different groups of students. And Kate is still here. Is there a more elaborate answer that we need other than yes, there are opportunities?
Yeah.
Trying to take the spotlight off Kate.
I can build on that. The short and long answer is yes, and that's where our financial aid staff comes in when they're working with students. Okay, well, this program may not be right for you, but here are other options to consider. And again, there are a variety of sources that we can do to help students who come to us with a need that this program or some other program doesn't quite meet. That's the skill and the talent that they work through with our students. So, yeah.
And do we, this is my own naivety, I don't know, do we offer early childhood programming? Do we have early childhood programming here?
Those students are typically on an elementary school teacher path, if I remember correctly. But we also do, I mean, they, right. Dr. McLeod, do you want to help me out there?
Good to skate.
I'll remember to introduce myself. Making McLeod, Executive Vice President of Academic Affairs. Yes, we do have an early childhood certificate that an individual could gain that is tied to the front end of our elementary education program. So it's dual-tracked because, of course, early childhood really stops at age four as far as the training and the work that we do about psychology and all of those pieces. So a student can take a divergent path if they just would like the certificate and would like to work in daycare centers and early childhood centers, Head Start, those sorts of programs. Or they could divert into elementary education and start to work their way up the kindergarten and higher track.
Thank you. And we have, that is all currently offered?
That is all currently offered.
Thank you, appreciate that. That concludes my questions.
I would mention something, Trustee Smith Everett, that 10 years ago, the foundation wasn't as good at matching students to the various foundation scholarships. Is that a fair, looking for, and part of the reason we give so much money away now, not only is because our donors have been so generous, but because the foundation and financial aid does such a great job of finding a scholarship that might fit you, your program, your circumstances, you know, whatever, especially some of these restrictive ones. We do a much better job, and it's a coordination of the entire staff. So, but good question. I'm sure they can target that and find.
Yeah, I think I'm grateful. I really appreciate the, all the work doing that because that's two areas that can very easily operate in silos that really would get to students that this program will probably attract, and we want to make sure we grab them and enroll them.
And Chris Gray, I know we'll look forward to the rollout next week. I did, I was driving down 635 this weekend, and I saw a great billboard, welcome back, we saved a seat for you. It really caught my eye, and I thought it was very well done. And I think now it's your, tomorrow starts here, we promise. About that. Don't give up my day job? Okay, thank you, Dr. Bound, for that report. We have no new business and old business. The first item is Amendment Number Two to Dr. Bound's employment agreement. And I know there's a little, there's probably some questions or clarification needed here. First of all, we signed our initial employment agreement with Dr. Bound in March of 2020, when we agreed to hire him. The first amendment was to increase the reimbursement amount for his moving expenses and transition expenses. So the second amendment that you're looking at today, it follows our motion and vote last month to extend his contract by a year and to increase his base salary by 2.5%. And that's reflected in the information you received today, I think from Kelsey Nazar. The motion also, or the amendment also cleans up two pieces of the original contract. The original contract was a five-year rolling contract, and it had the years specified. So it was 20, 21, 22, 23, and 24. When you add a year on it, all of a sudden, all those years are wrong because you need to add 2025. So we've cleaned that up to just say it's a five-year rolling contract, basically, and whatever year you're in, you've got that many more years if we choose to extend it next year. In addition, the contract referenced an effective date but did not define an effective date. And you could have arguably said the effective date was March when he signed it, when he and I countersigned it. But we wanted it to be July 1 because that's the start of our fiscal year, and that should be the start of the president's annual compensation year. So the third bullet point that you saw from Kelsey was simply that we are defining the effective date as July 1 of the year in which he is our president. So those are the reasons we need a second amendment. One is to increase his salary by the 2.5%, and that's his base salary only. That was the only increase he requested and that we authorized. And then the other two are really cleanup of the contract that we should never have to do again. So with that, before we ask for a motion, are there any questions on that explanation? If not, I would accept a motion that the Board approve an amendment to the president's employment agreement to increase the president's base salary by 2.5% and to make the non-substantive changes clarifying the effective date and the general evaluation process to more clearly describe the intent of the parties and the form of the amendment, I believe you've seen. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
I'll take a motion from Trustee Ingram, seconded by Trustee Snyder. Any other discussions or further questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you for allowing us to clean those up, and thanks to Dr. Bound and to Kelsey Nazar for helping us make that so. In the future years, we'll be focusing on the compensation items more so than on the language of the contract. The next item is an update from the Subcommittee on Board Policies and New Trustee Orientation, which was created by the Board last month. And I'll turn it over to Trustee Ingram. And the members of that committee are Trustee Ingram and Trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a short report as a reminder. As you just mentioned, all trustees, actually, we received an email prior to that meeting in June, on June 10, 2021, indicating your intent to form an ad hoc committee for the purpose of reviewing trustee policies and procedures as well as the new trustee orientation. The formation of the committee was approved, as you just mentioned, at last month's Board of Trustees meeting. Trustee Smith Everett and I have begun that process with an introductory meeting with Dr. Bound and Chair Musil. It is our plan to give all trustees an opportunity to provide input on both the policies and procedures, which are included in a packet, which I have left at everyone's desk at this point this evening, and we'll make sure that we get those to the folks who are not here in person this evening, either via email or a hard copy, whatever they would prefer. It is our plan, in addition, that we do believe that all of us will be able to make valuable contributions to this process. So we would encourage everyone to take a look at that. This evening, we are providing those policies and requesting your review, fellow trustees, to provide us with any suggestions on or before July 31. That will allow us to prepare for the committee of the whole meeting in August. So we look forward to your comments, your thoughts, and recommendations via email, phone, or in person, whatever and however you would request to communicate with us, we are happy to oblige. As policies and procedures provide direction to the governance amongst us, these are important to the review process and will be recommended for inclusion into the new trustee orientation, therefore, we are beginning with these. Our main focus is on recommendations to make the orientation process for the new trustees as effective as possible, with the focus on what do I need to know? We look forward to strengthening the understanding of our responsibility of board governance as well as the work we do toward JCC's mission of inspiring learning to transform lives and strengthen communities. So with that, I basically will conclude my report, but before I do so, I want to ask Trustee Smith Everett if you have anything that you would like to add.
I do not. I think you've said all the things.
Okay.
One thing that I think is important here about the orientation work, not only what you do with KACC, but also the fact that Dr. Bound and staff are hosting all of the candidates, inviting all of the candidates that are up for, that are running this year for the Board to a, an orientation, a pre-election, pre-orientation session. I can't remember when.
We had one on Tuesday of this week, and then we have one next Thursday.
Okay. What do I need to know? Good question for trustee candidates. And Trustee Ingram had mentioned bringing it back to the committee of the whole. My goal would be to bring back, bring this back to a retreat rather than a committee of the whole so we can kind of focus on this and we can do it. I mean, the orientation, the policies flow into the orientation. The orientation needs to be done in time so that we can help the, any new trustees that are going to be elected in the fall, and we know we're going to have at least two. So that's kind of the plan that we put in place. Are there questions? If not, we'll move on into the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a list of agenda items that are routine and have been vetted by the administration and are typically handled in one motion and one vote. Every trustee has the opportunity to remove any items from the consent agenda that they'd like to have considered separately. Are there any items on today's consent agenda, A 1 through 5, B 1 through 5, and then C, that anybody would like to consider separately? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved by Trustee Smith Everett, seconded by Trustee Ingram to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion carries 6-0. The final item on the agenda is an executive session that I would ask for a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of personnel, discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individual to be discussed. No action will be taken during this session. The executive session will last for 30 minutes, beginning at 6:50 PM and ending at 7:20 PM, at which time, the open session will resume at the same location for those in person and by Zoom video conference for those observing by Zoom. We'd like to invite Dr. Andy Bound and Kelsey Nazar to join this executive session. Do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Ingram, seconded by Trustee Snyder. I think that gives us six minutes for a short break. And if Trustee Lawson and Trustee Cross, I assume they received a Zoom invite, so if you would join us by 6:50, we'll get going. Oh, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Abstained.
Motion carries 5 to 0 with one abstention. Trustee Cross. Okay, we'll move into executive session. We'll be back here at 7:20. Good evening. We are back from our executive session. At 7:20, we concluded about 7:19. It's now about 7:22 because of the technology lag. No action was taken during the executive session. There's nothing left on the agenda except that I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Ingram and seconded by Trustee Smith Everett that we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion carries 4-0. Thank you all for joining us for the meeting. We are adjourned.